Good morning, everybody. I'm trying to remember to press my button. Start with roll call.
Okay. Roll call is Mayor Fruland Bogus.
President.
Steve Sommers.
President.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mr. Walton's not here yet. Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Mary Alswu is not attending. Mayor Finan.
I'm here.
Alicia Beck. Patrick Brown.
Here.
And Katina Wiltshire.
Here.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moves, Wiltshire.
Second, Brown.
All right. If there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Audience participation this morning, so we will move on to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for November 22nd?
So moves, Sommers. Second, Brown.
If there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Now we are on to the October 2024 consolidated financial reports. Since Orion's not here, you want to do that, Tammy?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good morning. For the consolidated financial report, we have a healthy fund balance with our usual negatives for workforce and ICERT. And we have decided that we are going to, depending on the outcome of the continuing resolution and the, you know, budget impasse, we potentially might be holding on our intent to pay down the loans for our two Head Start facilities. So that was about $2.4 million. And then we also owe the Housing Authority between $600,000 and $700,000. So we're going to, depending on the outcome of today, potentially be delaying those to ensure that we have plenty of cash on hand to operate if there is a government shutdown. So I just want to point out, of the fund balances that you see there, $14 million total, we will be sending $2.4 million out the door at some point, if not this month, after the first of the year, and then another $600,000 to $700,000 to the Housing Authority.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consolidated reports? So moves. Marlin? Second?
Second, Sommers.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Move down to the list of bills. Tammy, do you want to do that report too?
Sure. There's not really anything that's an anomaly that needs to be pointed out, so we would just request approval of the list of bills.
Losing track here. Is there a motion to approve the list of bills for November?
So moves, ma'am.
Second?
Brown.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? All right. And we are to our action item with the bylaws. Tammy, you get to do that. You're going to have the show all day today.
So first of all, thank you so much for being here. I know it was a little dicey for some of you getting in, but we do need a, all of the charter members here in order to approve the changes to the bylaws and then two-thirds of the members present in order to approve the recommended changes. So the changes have gone through the bylaws committee and are recommended for approval, and they have been reviewed by the State's Attorney's Office and also Chapman Cutler, which is the county's bond counsel. I know that Mr. Walton had provided some additional considerations for amendments. However, we decided to address those at a later date because we didn't want to delay the approval of the legal changes to the bylaws. So we will potentially be bringing those back maybe later next year to consider those changes that Mr. Walton recommended, which were just some editorial cleanups and some procedural clarifications based on how the commission is operating.
Well, I don't really feel like there's much more to discuss on that.
I know, we've talked about it, I think, for three months now.
Anyway, I guess what we need is a motion to approve or accept and place on file the bylaw changes. So moves. All right. Second? All right. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? All right. We got that taken care of finally. The next item on here is from our Head Start office, the action plan for corrective action.
Do you think maybe we should do a quick roll call?
Oh. Since we have to have specific people present to pass it. All right.
Okay. Mayor Fruland Bogus?
President.
Steve Sommers?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Mr. Walton is not here. Mayor Marlin? Mayor Finan?
Wait, are we voting on the bylaws?
Yeah.
We voted on the bylaws.
Okay, that would be a yes. Let me start over. Mayor Fruland Bogus?
Yes.
Steve Sommers?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
Mayor Finan?
Yes.
Alicia Beck?
Yes.
And Patrick Brown?
Yes.
And Katina Wiltshire?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Do you want to explain a little bit about this before we approve it? I know it was in the packet, but.
I'm recommending approval of the attached corrective action plan to correct the nonperformance of the Office of Head Start. The RPC, early childhood program, addressed the safety incident that occurred on June 25, 2024 involving an early Head Start teacher. The incident was thoroughly investigated and resulted in a three-day unpaid suspension for failing to actively supervise the child in work care. The RPC CEO and director shared the incident and follow-up with the governing body, which is the RPC commissioners, and the policy council members. The RPC management team worked closely with training and technical assistance, granting to specialists from Head Start Regional Office on the corrective action plan and completed action steps to further increase safety and quality of services. The corrective action plan that was included in the packet must be approved by the governing body prior to the follow-up monitoring, which will be January 9, 2025.
All right. Thank you very much. So is there a motion to accept the and place on file the corrective action plan? I'll make that one.
Go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
I'll check in.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? Question carried. So with our program updates, those that are absent, does anyone else have their reports for them or?
I can combine Orion's and mine.
Okay.
If that's okay.
I spoke with him this morning.
Okay.
The audit is completed. It was completed on the 17th of this month. It was presented to the county board last night. Orion is working on uploading the state report. That should be done today. And after, actually, I think he told me that the report's already been uploaded to the federal audit clearinghouse. So our hope and expectation is that the stop pay and FBI enlock will be lifted by the end of December. I know, you know, the holidays in there, so that could, you know, slightly delay it, but we're expecting that it's going to take about a week. So hopefully, by the end of the year, that will be lifted, and we will be back to being able to draw down the administrative funding for like even weatherization and process our grants and modifications.
Just to add to that, these were, these are discussions that have been initiated by, whoops, by the state to perhaps look at agencies that are parts of local government and not treat them the same as not-for-profit organizations when they have late audits. Because in our case, we don't have any control over the, how the audit is handled by the, you know, county auditor's office with the external auditors. But if it was within our purview, then I think holding us accountable in the same manner that they do not-for-profit organizations would make sense. So hopefully, there will be some, you know, if we find ourselves in the same situation with the 2024 audit, that the state may look at us maybe a little bit differently. So we'll provide you with an update if they do change their policy regarding public interests.
Thank you. All right.
Oh, sorry.
Brandy?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was trying to.
Oh, okay.
I do want to make a public statement regarding the audit. As you know, as commissioners, we've been through this for a number of years now. And one of the things that I do want to, and Tammy's going to follow up in writing to the county executive and everybody else involved, don't really appreciate the integrity of the RPC and the staff here at the RPC being questioned publicly by the county auditor. We've been accused of being political before, and this was when, even when Betty was around. And when we've expressed the impact that the lateness of the audit has on our ability to have grants processed, you know, that has been sort of brushed aside or that we're either overstating the situation. I know that, for instance, you know, workforce could not apply for certain grants that were available. Brandy, we wanted to apply for almost $2 million in funding from the state, and we were not eligible to apply for that because of the, being out of compliance with the lateness of the audit. Apparently, some statements were made last night, you know, questioning what we have stated, and I just wanted to maybe be on record that every information that we've provided regarding the lateness of the audit is based on fact. It's not something that we're just making up to make somebody look bad. It has a real impact on our ability to pursue grants.
I concur with everything Delitzo said, and yes, I will be following up with the county executive and finance leadership to provide some clarification to dates that were provided last night and information that are inaccurate and have, did not align with the information that we provided to the county previously regarding deadlines for grants and date requirements as well.
I think I just want to go on record as having sat on the regional planning commission during all the ups and downs relating to the audit and the issues we have had, both with the state and the federal government because of the problems that were created by the auditor's office, not by RPC, that I just, I wanted on the record that I appreciate you making your statement, but that you don't, you don't need to tell us that we support you. We were here and saw what happened. And I think really what we need to know is, you know, do you, and we have Chair Sommers here, but do you need us to contact, you know, county board members? Is there really, are they believing this or, you know, is it just the, you know, these random statements? But, you know, we're here to support RPC and to help whatever you all need.
I will just say that county board members have faith in the actions that RPC takes and believe the data that you provide them.
Tammy?
There were two findings for the 2023 audit. One of them was a new finding directly related to the auditor's office. There were nine bullet points in that finding that were considered material weaknesses, and they were largely related to adjustments that had not been recorded or not properly recorded in the financial statements. One of the things that is concerning, and I did actually speak last night with Finance Chair Furtado about this, is that we are at the end of fiscal year 2024, and there has not been a chief deputy auditor in the position for months. There's, there was one there, I think, maybe three weeks, and they're gone already. But it's the end of the fiscal year, and so we're at significant risk of all of those findings that we saw in 2023 being repeat in 2024, and in fact, if not worse than what we saw in 2023. So just to put on the record that there is significant concern and risk that, you know, we might be in this situation again if there's not some kind of significant change and someone put in that position very quickly that is capable of doing that work in a timely manner.
Sorry. Maybe as a follow-up to Mayor Finan, a question. Would you want us to draft a letter or a statement coming from the commissioners to go to the county?
We've done that in the past, and I think, and if you need a motion, I'm happy to make a motion that we do that. I, I think that's helpful because if nothing else, it puts us on record, and maybe it's something that you can show our funding entities so that they understand that RPC is responsive and responsible, because that's really been the issue, is that you all end up carrying the burden of the lack of responsiveness. So I, I may, I'm, I move that we provide a letter, and I, do you want it signed by Chair Fruland Bogus, or do you want it from the whole commission? What's more helpful?
I'll second that motion, and I'd request it be from the whole commission.
Yeah, I think it would be a little more impactful if everybody signs it.
Okay.
We'll correct it.
I, I appreciate, I think that's a great idea. I, I think the more we keep pressure on it and, and keep it out in the front, you know, as far as how it impacts us, not, I mean, I think, I'm pretty sure the county board, for the most part, understand that. But I think publicly, and maybe, like I said, maybe it'll get out there to the public a little more loud and clear, especially anybody who is familiar with the programs and things that RPC does and understands the impact that it has maybe to a program that either they personally, you know, have within their lives use the services or have loved ones or, you know, people in their community that know how valuable some of those services are, and if you put those things at risk, it's a huge impact that could impact their lives, their family members' lives, and I, I just think that needs to be in the forefront to keep harping on it. I don't like to use that word because that sounds negative, but, you know, just to make sure that everybody's, I, I just don't like to put it on the back burner, and then it kind of fades away until it pops up again, and then, you know, come next November, we're talking about it. So maybe we need to talk about, yeah. I think it was mentioned at the last meeting, every meeting if we have to, you know, so that's all I have. So there was a motion. Do we need to vote on it? So is there, you seconded, so if there's no further discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Question carried, so. Brandy, do you want to give your report?
Good morning, ladies and commissioners. On November 28th, the Head Start, early Head Start, early Head Start expansion grants for Ford, or Champagne, Ford, Iroquois, and Bemidji counties were submitted to the Office of Head Start for review. The grants are now in process of that review for any changes necessary. I'm currently wrapping up the grant application for the notice of funding opportunity for Champagne County. We have received letters of support from Senators Dick Durbin, Tammy Duckworth, and Paul Frachi, also members of Congress, Nikki Bezinski and Robin Kelly. I'm also very thankful of the support from our mayors and village administrators, the policy council members, and community partners. Our policy council will be strong, and I am confident that we will retain the grant for Champagne County. On Friday, November 22nd, Delitzo and I presented our appeal for the chronically under-enrolled designation for the early Head Start grant, and earlier this month, we received notification from the Office of Head Start that we won the appeal, and no funding or enrollment reductions will occur. However, the program must reach full enrollment for each grant and maintain it. The centers in Ford, Iroquois, and Bemidji counties are still not open due to DCFS licensing and fire marshal inspections. It's, a lot of that is, has to do with their scheduling and the holidays that we've, we've had since November. We are hopeful to be open by mid-January. Children and families have been provided educational activities, weekly check-in visits, and family support services while they're waiting for the centers to open. That is all I have for this morning. I'm open to your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Brandy?
I have one question.
Yes.
What is the, what is the deadline that we were given, or were we given a deadline to reach maximum occupancy and enrollment?
Well, so we should be get full enrollment now. Okay? But when Delitzo and I presented the information to the Office of Head Start, early Head Start expansion has reached 100% full enrollment. We just need to maintain it. The early Head Start grant, we are at 87% enrolled, and by the end of the month, we'll be reaching above 90%. We, during the hearing, I explained that we should be at full enrollment by the end of January 2025. We have some, we are currently working with a new collaborative partner that will, that is very interested in dueling, enrolling children into our program for Head Start and early Head Start, so we're very excited about that venture, and that will also help with our enrollment. So, Sam, sir.
Yes. Thank you. Right. We will move down, looks like, to Justin.
Morning, everyone. Get my informal appearance. I have two holiday parties today, and I spent all year putting on a little weight so I could wear red and D and look like Santa Claus. But I appreciate you all meeting this morning. I was trying to mail out a annual report to you all. It didn't go out in time, so I did just bring a physical copy to you. This is an annual report for the East Central Workforce Board. RPC's involvement with the Workforce Board aligns with our mission of helping individuals and communities thrive through planning, education, and supportive services. And to that end, it was a really productive and fun year. On the cover is a pre-apprenticeship program that we collaborated with the East Central Building Destruction Trades Council on. We helped get underrepresented folks into pre-apprenticeship for the trades, and we have one person as, enrolled as an apprentice in the Spray Player by Thinner Union, so that was exciting. I will cover this whole annual report. Please read it at your leisure. I will be available throughout the year if you'd like me to come visit and talk to you or the stakeholders in your city about some of these things. I will ask to turn to page six. I think an exciting thing in 2025 is the Rural Development Network. There's a lot of visibility and usage of workforce development in Champagne County, but in Iroquois, Ford, Douglas, and Paiott, there's not a lot of usage of visibility. In working with our county elected officials and with our Workforce Board, we did receive a state grant to focus on rural counties in a couple different ways, and I just wanted to highlight the timing of this. It's pretty exciting because Tuscola just moved to a county-wide EDC, and then Ford has some new leadership, and they're thinking about putting in money towards economic development. And so us working with them and with Iroquois and Paiott County, the timing's right to find alignment between goals to increase visibility and usage in our rural counties, so I'm excited about that. Throughout the report, you'll see different things that we worked on this year, like expanding apprenticeships and working with partners in the workforce development space. And at the very end, you'll see, on page 15, we were involved with the state's Workforce Board strategic planning efforts, and we're able to represent the other 21 local workforce areas. Going forward, RPC through our Workforce Board elected officials and all work for the next year or two is going to have more leadership at the state level with workforce development as the next step of the Workforce Board's strategic planning is for the state association of workforce boards to do strategic planning, and I'm leading us through that as the vice president and the president. I did talk to our chief elected officials this past month and our Workforce Board to see if they still supported those state-level efforts, and they said, yes, you, we need to be at the state level and moving things forward in Illinois to support the workforce system as it is. So excited about the work we're doing, excited about 2024, the report, excited for you to have the report, and if you have any questions down the road, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. So does everyone, any questions for Justin? Sorry. Tammy?
I have nothing.
You have nothing more?
Nothing more to add.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept and place on file the program division updates? So moves. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right. Question carried. Delitzo, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Just this week, Training Center received accreditation alongside four other training centers in the country. What I found interesting is that one of those organizations is the Regional Planning Commission out of North Carolina, and they're very, very similar to us. So I think for folks that may look at us having the Training Center as perhaps an anomaly, it isn't, because that organization is called Piedmont Regional Planning Commission. They have workforce. In fact, they also have a mobile vehicle to do outreach for workforce, just like we do. They have weatherization, they do rental assistance, and then they also have the training facility. So that made us, or it made me feel good to know that there's similar organizations doing the same work that we're doing here in Champagne County. Yesterday, I was appointed to serve on the Policy Advisory Council, which is a statutory body that advises the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity on energy efficiency programs. And so the composition of that group consists of the major utilities, so ComEd, Ameren, NiCo, Peoples, and the others, as well as some of the environmental groups, and then myself and the present CEO of the Illinois Community Action Association. So it's a two-year appointment, but we anticipate that there will be a lot of activity, given some of the changes brought about through the SEJA legislation that will probably necessitate for us to take a closer look at how the LAHI program is structured. So we'll be working through that. And then the last thing is, as you know, I serve as the national chair for community action. It's a two, two-year, in your term limited, but the board, in consultation with the attorney of that national organization, is exploring extending my term by another year, given some of the changes we're having in, in Washington, DC. So that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that sounds exciting. So you must be doing a good job.
Gray hair. I know, I know.
I see no older new business here, listed here. This is our last meeting for 2024, so going into 2024... This is our last meeting for 2024, so going into 2025, the chair rotation starting in January will be Steve Summers, and then the vice chair will be Mr. Smith.
Oh, okay.
So that will be that. We have a community member committee meeting immediately following this meeting, and that would be the charter members. And do you have a preference on who the, because we always have one non-charter member with that committee also?
That's no preference.
On who? Patrick?
I thought you already said that.
You already, you already.
Okay, that's fine with me.
We're coming on to pretend as they're a charter member.
Yeah.
I think what I had on the list in charter members was Riantool, Champaign County, Irvin and Champaign.
Yeah. But I was thinking you already.
I think I remembered.
I was thinking you already told me to be on that committee.
I'd like to drug you in on the other video. So anyway, that's all I have for that. So is there a motion to adjourn our meeting this morning?
Some move?
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Merry Christmas, everybody. Have a great holiday. I guess we'll see you in 2025. Sounds kind of crazy to say that.